Everybody.
I believe we determined that that was Mr. Dixon calling in.
Yes.
Seven, four, four, five is Ron, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
They all hail the gang's all here. Hello, Mimi, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
How was your first day?
Just fabulous. It's like it's not over yet. Ask me again, ask me again in a few minutes. Don't we're so good, you're all here.
Okay. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Hopefully everyone will get to meet you in person sometime soon.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, so it's seven o'clock, is everybody ready? Oh, you give me the high sign or whatever you're ready.
For me, I'm ready to go whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right, good evening. I will call the November ninth, twenty twenty, Milltown Borough Council meeting to order. Uh, I'll ask for a roll call. We need to last. Well, so before I say that, I would like to introduce everyone. Do we have any public audience on here yet?
You.
We do.
So I would like to introduce our new municipal clerk for her debut performance. This is Marie Mimi Marler, and we're happy to have her with us. Today was her first day with the borough, so we welcome Mimi. And now I will throw it to you for the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President Farkas.
Here.
Councilman Dixon.
Here.
Councilman Legati.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Newbar. Councilman Peretti.
Here.
Councilman Sambraana.
Here.
And Mayor Mayor.
I am here, thank you.
The President.
Thank you. Next, we will read the meeting statement. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough newspapers, The Home News Tribune, and Star Ledger Publishing companies on January ninth, twenty twenty. Renote of access to meeting via teleconference was submitted on August twenty second, twenty twenty. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed. When public comments are open, participants who would like to speak will be given instructions by the Borough Clerk to identify themselves.
Thank you. Next, we will have a moment of silence, followed by a salute to the flag, which is behind me, and Councilman Legati. So we'll start with the moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, next we have minutes. We have the minutes from October thirteenth, twenty twenty. I'll ask the council, what is your pleasure?
If the minutes be accepted as typed up.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Newbauer, second by Councilman Legati. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbar.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Sambraana.
Aye.
And Mayor, and Mayor, do you actually vote here? In some boroughs, they have the mayor vote, and others they do not, so I just.
I do not, just.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't want to exclude. So that motion carries.
Um, and so I have to apologize because I have, um, I had the wrong hard copy next to me, so we didn't have minutes on this.
Okay, I, I didn't have a minute on mine, but I thought maybe you had them in your packet, so.
No, I was looking at the wrong packet, so.
Let's rescind that action then, because I was wondering myself.
I'm just trying to keep Mimi on her toe.
That's good, well. We were all just trying to go along together.
But a very good first test. I'm going to cross that out, they're going to, I think it's Nancy. Not going to think I'm taking good notes.
Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Great.
All right, so next we will move on to items for discussion. The first item for discussion is fundraising for the Milltown Rescue Squad.
And Madam Mayor, I believe Michael Smith is here on behalf of the Rescue Squad and has a few comments that he'd like to make addressed to the mayor and council. So if we can provide him with the ability to address the council, that'd be great.
I'm sorry, the name?
Michael Smith.
Michael Smith.
Is he, is he, has he just called in?
He is an attendee, he's listed.
He just chatted that he's here.
Yeah, he's in the chat here.
So do I need, I'm sorry.
That's good.
I don't, I actually don't see him on my list, so, but he's able, can everybody hear him already?
I do.
Not yet. Nope.
And participants, you have to switch from panelists to attendees to be able to.
Thank you, Hannah. So isn't it, he would be right now as an attendee, and I still don't see Mr. Smith.
He is there.
Hmm.
Mike, yeah, I see him too, because he's in the chat.
All right, we'll get there.
Yes, I am, two old panelists. Jeanette, do you see him as a?
He's under attendees. You have the two tabs, so not to pass.
No, I'm, I'm going, I'm flipping back and forth, and I'm like.
Yeah, no, it's under attendees. He's the fifth one down.
I'm sorry, he's?
The fifth one down, it goes Courtney Williams, Dorianne, Margaret O'Donnell, Megan Geyer, and Michael Smith above us. Oh, no, you called more than I'm sorry.
It's different for everyone.
Yeah.
Mimi, if you go to attendees, do you see nine?
I see nine.
You may have to scroll down.
I only have seven on the list. But I, I do see that there are nine in attendance. It's just Mr. Smith is, and I'm trying to do the tab on the side to.
You have to scroll down, yeah.
Yeah, and it's not scrolling, it's like not wanting to move, let's see. Ah, okay. We're there.
Okay, good.
Hey.
My apologies, Mr. Smith.
No problem, good evening, Michael Smith here, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you very much.
Thank you all, oh, good evening. Good evening, Madam.
Are we recording?
I'm sorry, Anna?
The meeting, I just wanted to make sure, are we recording the meeting? I didn't get the notice that we were recording this meeting. You know how normally it has little, okay, good.
Um, is that something that we have to turn on here? I thought it was auto, she would set it up as automatic, do we, can we, do we know?
I just turned it on. We just have to start it at the beginning of each meeting. I just turned it on.
I'm gonna, yeah, because usually it would say, I'm going to, I'm going to say that I needed to turn that on, but had no idea that it wasn't already preset, so, uh.
That's meeting time, no one.
The minutes.
The minutes.
We'll get there.
Minutes, we should be fine, we haven't done anything of any substance, well.
Okay, I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and the members of the Milltown Borough Council. My name is Michael Smith, President of the Milltown Rescue Squad. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to request permission for a fundraising event for the Milltown Rescue Squad. As you know, the Milltown Rescue Squad was unable to conduct our door-to-door fund drive this past May due to COVID nineteen. The squad did mail out our donation flyer and envelope in May, and we appreciate the continued support of the Milltown community by mailing in their donation to the squad. Many years ago, the borough approved participation in the Length of Service Awards Program, known as LoSAP. The squad is so grateful that LoSAP is available to our members who gain enough points over the year through participation in meetings, fundraising, and responding to emergency calls. Since we were unable to conduct the door-to-door fundraising, members were unable to achieve the points for the fundraising category, as Fund Drive is our major annual fundraiser. The squad discussed opportunities conduct, to conduct a fundraiser to gain the LoSAP's points needed for our members. We are seeking permission to conduct a drive-through fundraiser on Sunday, November twenty ninth, and Saturday, December fifth, from ten AM to two PM each day. The squad would like to utilize the municipal building parking lot for the drive-through, as there is room for people who wish to drop off a donation. If we were to use the squad building lot, we are concerned of traffic pulling over on Main Street or creating traffic in the center of town by entering and exiting our parking lot. Thank you so much for your consideration of my request, I am happy to take any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith?
What would be, what would the fundraising event be?
Uh, we were thinking, Randy, we're just going to bring the ambulances and the rescue truck over to the parking lot, so we would have crews available to respond to emergencies, and then just put out tables and take donations. Uh, we're going to do that through advertising, we were going to use hopefully Channel fifteen, and then do a mailer out to everyone that we were going to be there on those two dates.
Okay, then I, I would assume you have one driveway to enter and one driveway to exit?
Yeah, we could set up, if we were, do get permission to use the municipal parking lot, then yes, we could set it up so that, you know, there'd be entrance from maybe the old DPW side and then come out the, where the police entrance side is, or vice versa, we're happy to do that.
Right, do we just have to be cognizant of the fact that the police station is still operating, and that if there's an emergency, a, as you would respond, they would respond also?
Good point, yes, sir.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Could you repeat the times just one more time, so everyone can hear that?
Absolutely, it would be on Sunday, November twenty ninth, from ten AM to two PM, and Saturday, December fifth, from ten AM to two PM.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that, that sounds like a good idea, and we certainly don't want to impact the, the squad because of COVID when you've been probably busier than normal and couldn't do your normal fundraising. So I, I would ask the Borough Attorney, did we need to do a, a resolution at the next meeting, or?
I'm not sure we have a meeting in between the dates, I, I think.
We're talking about actually doing one on the twenty third.
Are we, okay, then we can put one off of the twenty third, um, if, if we're going to have a meeting then, um.
Or?
That's fine, or you can do a voice vote tonight and just provide them with that guidance, I mean.
Oh, okay.
You know.
So yeah, then why, when do we do a voice vote?
You can do it now, you can just.
Oh, okay.
Take a voice vote, if someone wants to move to permit that access, you know, I have no problem with it, if you want to formally at the next meeting, we can memorialize it then too, whatever you want to do.
Okay, well, let's see, so they can go ahead and plan and start to get the word out, why don't we do the voice vote tonight?
I got a couple of questions before you do a voice vote, a voice vote. Um, I, I got a lot of feedback with speaking just now, I didn't hear everything, um, I know that.
Losing your neck.
He's frozen.
That's.
He's frozen.
Got no issues with anything going on, and are you working with Ralph as well?
We lost your neck.
So, yeah, we.
Nick blocked that, I, I was frozen or something, yeah.
Say it again, Nick, you're frozen again.
Oh, no.
All right, um.
Oh, Nick?
Back here.
Oh, okay.
We'll try again.
Yeah.
Hi.
Try again here.
Okay.
I have a few questions. I, I'm going to try one more time. I have a few questions, I know that Randy touched on the police operating. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Um, I want to make sure that you're working with Chief Cannelli on both of these days, and also making sure you're working with Ralph Jeznowski on both of these days. I'm assuming that you're already doing that, but I just want to verify that.
I will be happy to, I have not reached out to either yet, because we wanted to present to council, but absolutely, we'd reach out to the chief and to Ralph, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? So let's do it to a voice vote, all in favor?
No, we've got to make a motion first, right?
Sorry, my, my bad.
I've got a motion, so I make a motion to allow use of the municipal building's parking lot on both Sunday, November twenty ninth, and Saturday, December fifth, for the Rescue Squad's fundraising event.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Newbauer, second by Council President Farkas. Uh, I'm going to do a voice vote, right?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries, go move. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Borough Council, we appreciate your support, thank you so much.
No, thank you, Michael.
Okay, and now we will move on to the second item for discussion, which is a, um, discussion or presentation regarding the open space land on Washington Avenue and the, um, Raritan River, um, train station, uh, project. Dorianne Kerber is online, or I see her, Dorianne, Mimi? I'm not sure if there's others that will be presenting, but Dorianne can tell us once you let her in.
Mimi, you're muted.
Oh, yeah, you're on mute.
Okay, I'm sorry, um, it says that Dorianne is using an older version of Zoom so that I'm unable to allow her to talk. She's promoted to pa, all right, let me promote, I'm going to promote her to a panelist, maybe.
Oh, I see her now, okay. Dorianne? You're on mute. I can see her, you're in our, oh, here, there you are.
That's good. Is that better?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So Mimi. Mimi has the slides that she can share?
I can.
Dorianne, is there anybody else that you want to present with you to let in?
Um, there's Barbara Wright and, and Ken DeRay. They'll be, they're, um, on the list as participants.
Ah, okay, I see Barbara. Um, and I'm sorry, who is the other one, Dorianne?
Ken.
So.
Do you know his number, because I don't see a head, is it maybe one of the two numbers on there?
No, one's wrong.
Yeah, one, oh, one's wrong, so is it maybe that seven, three, two, six, zero, six?
Five oh nine three.
Five three.
Um, I can certainly allow them to talk to see. Can you please, um, if your phone number is five oh nine three, can you, um, please identify yourself?
Uh, look, can you hear me now, this is Ken DeRay?
Oh, okay, perfect, I can, yeah, thank you, so we're all set.
I think so, is Barbara unmuted?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, and so I can share this document for you, um, on the screen, and, depending on who's speaking, if you could identify when you would like me to switch the slides, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I'll, it's Dorianne Kerber.
Can everybody see the screen? And the, okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's a miracle!
Okay, take it away, Dorianne.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and Borough Council, for allowing me to present on behalf of Milltown Historical Society and the Raritan River Railroad Historical Society regarding the Milltown Train Station. This is a moving and restoration project, and you can go to the next slide. The Milltown Historical Society and the Raritan River Chapter, which is the Raritan River Historical Society, appreciate the opportunity to be on tonight's council meeting regarding the preserving the train station. Tonight, we are asking for your support, as requested by the county, uh, and we did in twenty eighteen, to approve a resolution to allow for the train station relocation from its current, um, spot of Washington Avenue on private property and to the open space. Three weeks ago, we did obtain the final site survey and site plans, which are paid in full by the organization. Some of our fundraising money is not pleaded, therefore, we are asking the current administration to provide support for the nonprofit organization to apply for grants, and this would also assist us with the fundraising. And once we have county, council and county approval, we'll be able to reach out to the community to do more fundraising, uh, and also, um, I meant to put in there, we would have a local business work on everything that we need to work on in terms of, um, the local permits and such. The organizations are not asking for any financial support from the Borough Council or Borough of Milltown. This project is being funded by donations, and we are ready to implement more fundraising ideas with your approval on this, and to gain communities, local community's support for the moving of this project, uh, forward. Once the train has been moved, and we would work on restoration of this train station, and that would be the next phase. You can go to the next slide. This gives you a little bit of history of the nonprofits. Uh, the Milltown Historical Society met with the Raritan River Chapter, and it's easier to say than the Raritan River Railroad, but, uh, sitting, and they decided to discuss the locating and restoration of the Milltown Train Station, and, as you see before, two thousand nine. They formed a partnership, and the Raritan River Railroad Historical Society applied for a five oh one C three, so they do have a tax exempt number to allow for larger fundraising efforts, uh, and also to, uh, apply for grants, which is usually what you need to have is a five oh one C three, where the government applies for the grants. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, fundraising began for this project.
Dorianne, one second, yeah, Mimi, can you go back one slide?
The passion and appreciation for the history from members has kept the interest of those involved to continue, and has spread throughout the community over the years, including the more active Historic Preservation Committee.
Okay, thank you. Now you can go ahead.
I understand that one, okay. And, and so far, the nonprofits did achieve its twenty-one thousand dollars in donations. And you can go to the next slide now.
You're good.
No, we're good.
No, go back one, go back.
This slide gives you a little bit of history of the railroad, uh, station, Milltown Train Station. I should have probably numbered them, I apologize. The Raritan River Railroad was a twelve mile short line, short line railroad founded in eighteen eighty-eight, and it was based in South Amboy, New Jersey, which ran as far as New Brunswick. And when it was built, it was built to earn the teeth of the US Railroad Building. So as you can see, there was a, um, served both passengers and freight in its heyday, and operated profitably throughout much of its existence. Nineteen thirty-eight, the end of an era, was preached on the Raritan River Railroad as passenger service was discontinued altogether after half a century of service. So, and it goes a little further, it tells you, basically, that, um, Conrail in eighteen eighty became the branch line of the system, and that's what it was absorbed, um, by them. Currently, the train station resides at eighty-six Washington Avenue on the local business private property. You can go to the next slide. This slide just tells the board members and some of the members of the Milltown Historical Society, I'm sure it's a more extensive list, um, but I just wanted to give you some information here. Our right is front, and she's on the call with us. Steve Gregus is Vice President, our Treasurer is Jim Reed, Secretary David Orniac, and then you see some of the members that have participated, uh, throughout the years, coming to attendance to meetings, uh, even as recently as last year, some of this, beginning of this year. Next slide, please. And this one gives you, oh, sorry, uh, the Raritan River Railroad Historical Society is at five oh one C three, as mentioned before. Tom Reynolds is President, Ken DeRay is Vice President, Philip Palladino is Secretary, and John Wallen is Treasurer, and there's a couple more people that have been quite involved, uh, some members are there, and what they did was, they created a subcommittee to move the project along, and that includes myself, Jim Reed, who is Milltown Historical Society, and Ken DeRay from the Raritan River Historical Society. And you can go to the next slide, it gives you a picture of the train station, not sure what year it is. Go to the next slide. So our request to the Milltown Borough Council is to have a resolution for support to move the Milltown Train Station, uh, from Jamie Kern's private business property to the open space district street. I forgot to mention, it's going to be on the berm area. Uh, we did supply information to the council, uh, mayor and council, in terms of the location from CME's map. With that, back in two thousand nine, there was a partnership between the two organizations to get this project off the ground. On July ninth, twenty eighteen, we did have a resolution, eighteen one ninety-eight, which council approves the relocating of this train station from the private property to open space. With this approval, the nonprofits continued to meet and secured estimates for work for the project, and in addition, we were able to obtain, uh, the site plans, um, for this project. Most of the work, um, had been done, oh, for a while, and then we got updated estimates, uh, upon approval of, um, oh, I'm sorry, the resolution. We proceeded to reach out to local businesses in late twenty nineteen, the foundation plans, we received those, uh, information moving the train station, information about clearing the berm, and the site plans, we did complete that, with the site survey. And we just got the site survey, well, actually, uh, three weeks ago, I had picked them up, and then about a month ago, we received the foundation plans. Periodically, uh, there was just a short report about it at the council meetings, because without these plans, we really couldn't move much forward. Next slide. The second request, uh, was to have a resolution to apply for the TAP grant. I've come to find out that this TAP grant, uh, we did apply in twenty eighteen, we did not receive an award from this grant, uh, as previous years when we did apply for it as well, um, seeing we had applied for the grants in the past. We feel hopeful with the site plans and the foundation plans that this might provide us with a better chance of success and winning an award. This is a federally funded grant that's through the state that you need to apply for, and I've come to find out that are very challenging and very competitive. We will only apply, uh, just to preserve the train station and for the landscaping that was done on the plans, uh, nothing else, the open space there. Each entity on the space has had a separate agreement with the county, and then, of course, an agreement with the Borough of Milltown. The current entities up on the, uh, open space area is the Lawrence Brook Watershed Partnership and the Four Boys Ice Cream. So for over twenty years, we've had a previous owner, the ice cream owner, the Milltown Ice Cream Depot, but also a. but also a previous agreement as well on these premises. Next slide. Let's explain it a little bit better. In order for us to proceed, each entity on the open space has a separate agreement with the county. Currently, one business, which financially four, and one nonprofit. For over 20 years, they have had these agreements in place with these two entities. Then in turn, each entity also has a sub-agreement with the borough for the both of these entities. So we would like to work with the borough. And the Milltown Historical Society was given, and there is a letter, I didn't post it here in this presentation, but both Madam Mayor and Council have this, that the historical society would have an agreement with the county and then a sub-agreement with the Borough of Milltown, as described previously. And that's through the conservation management agreement we had in 2016. And then, of course, the business and nonprofits have been from years ago. So the conservation, next slide, sorry. So the conservation management agreement exists between Middlesex County and the Borough of Milltown, which states that the Borough of Milltown is to provide a resolution and then provide it to the county for support of any projects on the Washington Avenue open space. Once they receive Milltown's resolution, they review the project, provide their support for the project to be implemented. And they'll provide comments if there's anything that needs to be or adjusted. We did have, for example, an Edo Scout Project, one was the Butterfly Garden, and one was the area up there to prevent people from pulling up on the open space area. Each entity on the open space has had a separate agreement. And we feel that since this has existed before, that we could possibly also do the same in order to remove the train station from its current location across to the open space. And then you can go to the last slide. We do use flyers. We also write articles. We did get a lot of support over the years, and even the last couple of years, when we had our annual concert. We have written to tapintoit.net, also patchnewjersey.com. We also advertise on Facebook, and people share it to get a broader audience for our events. In addition, we post locally in town at local businesses with our flyers, at the library, also on Channel 15 and local supermarkets. A little bit has changed because of COVID, but just wanted to bring that up. Letters of support, currently the National Raritan River Railroad Society, the Raritan River Chapter, Milltown Historical Society, and we're also updating letters of support in order to apply for any 2020 grants or possibly if there's anything in early 2021 for the organization. Most grants do want letters of support within a six-month to one-year term from the day the letter, and ours were from 2018, so we do have to update them. And that's why the county asked us to approach you. In terms of going further, once we receive support from both the Borough Council and Middlesex County, then we have the local business that will coordinate everything else with the town zoning and go through law permits, present to the planning board, zoning board, whichever it may be. In addition, they would coordinate with Conrail as well as police when the move does occur. They're going to be handling most everything. So at this point, we've done a lot of background work. And now we have one more company locally that will step up and handle and keep us, yeah, everything going on. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I think the council is aware that Dorian had emailed the information. So I asked her to present to the full council so that we could ask questions. But I, just as a first question, Dorian, for so many people probably haven't been following this since 2009, and I'm really not 100% sure, what was the reason for moving it from the property to, or the proposal to move it from the property to open space?
Reason being, it's on private property. And Mr. James Kern, who's the attorney over on Washington Avenue, has been gracious to keep holding out, hoping for this process to occur. And when we decided to ask for support in 2018, we tried to get things moving along, but it took a little longer than we expected, obviously about two years. But we did do what we needed to do with the site plans and survey plans and foundation plans. Now the next step would be full support from everyone to proceed further so that instead of it disappearing, it would be a historic landmark and preserved in the Borough of Milltown.
And maybe you could answer for the full council, and then they can, I'll let them ask questions. But if there was a resolution in 2018, I'm not quite sure why there's a need for a new resolution.
For us to apply for grants, it would need to be more current. That's just a requirement for some of the state grants or some of the foundation grants that you apply for through the Raritan River Railroad Historical Society, because they are 501(c)(3) and are able to apply.
So that's the, okay, I'll let the council go, and then I'll ask a few more questions. Anybody else have questions?
I have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
So, Dorian, do you, can you tell us when one, the deadline is for the grant application?
The current grant application for the TAP grant is due on November 24th.
November 24th, okay.
Correct.
And so you propose submitting it through the borough or submitting it directly?
They do require the business administrator also to provide a letter of support. And usually, because it's a state grant, they want the business administrator to, or borough's representative to submit the grant.
Okay, and what system would the BA be submitting that application through?
The Sage system, which is a state.
Yeah, it's part of the New Jersey state system, okay.
Correct.
Okay. I, I'm very well, I have a lot of experience with Sage when I was a research contract specialist at Rutgers. Sage is, it's an interesting system. Let's leave it at that. Okay, so November 24th.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Is that a matching grant or a full grant?
Yeah, is there, is, so is there, is there like an RFP or is there a proposal or something? Or was that in the paperwork that the mayor passed along?
Put it in the first email.
Yeah, was that the set aside program of 2020, the program requirements? Is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think anybody, did anybody answer that question, though? Is it an in-kind match or is it a 50% grant? What, are we talking?
I know it's usually 25%, but it also includes the labor or anyone to know, like the proof is going to be donated, so that cost would be included, but it would be show that it's in kind.
And just for the benefit of the audience, so the engineering report that you have, does that go through the, what it would entail to make sure that it's intact? Or what, what, what do you have that's in the proposal for that? Out of, you know, because one of the questions would be, how much is the cost to move? What's the maintenance of it? You know, who's paying for all of that?
Yes, as I said, through grants and through donations, we plan on doing some more fundraising, but also.
So you want to move it first and then pay, then pay for it? Or do you want to get the money and then move it? Because, you know, one of the questions I had was, this has been around since 2009. You have a resolution since 2018. What's changed in those 11 years or certainly in the last two years?
In the last two years, able, we were able to obtain the site plans and site survey, which helps when you're applying for grant to have as much as possible, as opposed to saying, we're going to obtain, we're going to obtain. Now we have it obtained, it gives us more strength in a grant application than it did before when we didn't have those. Plus, we have additional quotes and estimates available for the project.
Okay, can you share, can you share some of those figures with us? Or you could just wrap it into one big ballpark figure.
Well, we have had estimates of around $67,000 for around moving it, the foundation and securing it, because there's a lot of stuff underneath that needs to be secured for it to move as well as put it on the foundation. And then additional costs for the restoration, we were working on getting. We have some old estimates. We have to get them updated.
Dorian, am I correct in that without the grant that you want to apply for, you can't move this building?
We have some of the funds without this grant or additional fundraising. Either way, we'd at least try for both with the approvals. We would fundraise, have the winter, springtime, and also work with the vendor to put it on a pay schedule so that we can get it moved and get the foundation done, which he is working, willing to work with us.
I have a question.
How much is, I'm sorry, Randy, go ahead, go ahead.
Have you had a structural engineer look at this building? Because there's really doesn't seem to be too much of a point to go through this whole exercise if the building can't make the move. The building's from, what, 1888? It needs to be checked over by a structural engineer to be, to be sure, to save everybody a lot of headaches that the building can actually take the move. Wouldn't you agree with that?
I do agree with that request. And I was told prior to getting all the estimates that they had stated that it can be moved through.
Who would they be?
That would be Kurt Ludwig. We reviewed it as well as Brown and Glenn.
And how many historic buildings have they moved?
I would have to find that out. I can certainly.
Okay, but I'll venture to say the answer is zero. So all I'm trying to do is prevent a lot of paperwork and a lot of running around for a lot of people. I think that you should probably look to get a structural engineer to look at that building, go over the building, and get something from an engineer that says the building will make the move. Also, I guess, okay, while I'm at it, I have some other questions. Do you have, you have foundation plans? What's the foundation? A slab?
Ken, you want to take that?
Sure, sure. And I can actually, I can actually give a little background to the mayor and council on the whole process. This has been, you know, a long-term process by, you know, local residents, you know, a group of, you know, railroad historians who were motivated enough by the fact that this building still exists to not only form a local chapter of the National Railway Historical Society, but also to create a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in the state of New Jersey for this task. So we watched the station unfortunately deteriorate in the time it's taken to get, you know, public awareness and fundraising going. At this point, the station has been looked at by an architect, who I'm not positive, but I believe an architect in the state of New Jersey can sign and seal drawings just as, you know, to the extent that any, you know, engineer could. So the architect has looked at the station. Brown and Glenn, who understands a local contractor who does a lot of work in Milltown, has also looked at it. And this station, it's a wood frame station. It's not, it's not, it's not a masonry structure. It's not anything that's particularly difficult to move. It's really like moving a small house. The foundation that's being proposed by Kurt Ludwig is basically a CMU or concrete masonry unit, concrete block. In other words, you know, I think it's a maybe two or three course foundation, just enough room to keep the structure, the wood elevated enough so you don't have, you know, rot and you can actually, you know, to get under there for maintenance. So it's not a very high foundation, but it is, provides more access and more protection of the structure than just placing on a slab wood. So I, you know, I think I've addressed the issues. I don't know that I've answered your question specifically, but if there's anything more that I could add, please let me know.
Was there a total price? What's the total price?
Well, the, as this project developed, we, knowing that we were going to be relying on the support of grants, local businesses, over the course of several successful years of having holiday shows there in the borough, we were approached by many different tradesmen, tradesman contractors, who were willing to donate their time and supplies, who were very much behind the project. But we never felt that, you know, to approach this project, it was necessary to get the entire cost of doing the entire relocation and, you know, renovation, rehabilitation, renovation and restoration. So we decided that probably the best path to take would be to break this, this project basically down into three phases. And the first phase would be the restoration phase. And that's what we're actually addressing now with the site plan and the architectural plan. So we're addressing the fact that the station needs to be moved because not only is it located on private property, but it's somewhat in the Conrail right of way. So there's some deed restrictions on any, you know, restoration that could even done where it, where it exists now. So it would have to be moved to another site anyway. And to be available to the public, which we always felt was the primary benefit of having this restored, would be to move it to a public space. And since the property right across the street is county open space, it was identified very early on that that would be, you know, the perfect location. And, you know, many conversations, which this all takes time, you know, especially when you're, you know, people who are, you know, volunteers and maybe a little green of the process. We've all learned, we've learned a lot about this process over the last 10 years. However, you know, they, we found that there was, you know, there's support on a county, on a county-based, county, you know, wide basis and, you know, amongst their members who are responsible for that, that property and how it's used. And it was a use that was appropriate, okay, for the space. So we felt that this was the, the only way really to get this thing kicked off, that we would have a, you know, renovation and a restoration phase, which would be the following two phases, would be to just get it off the private properties that work could actually begin. So no, there's not a total, a grand total of all the costs because there could be, and we are very hopeful that there will be, you know, many avenues to get this thing, you know, first renovated and restored without having to, you know, spend, you know, any, as weak amount of the donated money that we've gotten from the people in Milltown and local, local communities, you know, that's our goal. So we know now, you know, at this point, what the move and the foundation cost.
Okay, and what are those costs? What's the move and the foundation cost?
I believe Dorian just mentioned to you, they've gone up over the years because as I, as I mentioned, this process takes some time. So some of the estimates we had from Brown and Glenn were outdated and they were, they were revised. And then as Dorian stated, there were some additional monies added to the last, the last estimate that would include some of the, you know, the strapping and whatever the, I'm not a, I'm not a carpenter or an architect, sounded a proper term. But basically, you know, the supports necessary to make sure that it was moved, you know, safely and without doing any, you know, damage to the structure. safely and without doing any, you know, damage to the structure. And, and I believe, Dorian, you stated that number was about sixty seven thousand dollars presently?
I'm trying to look for that.
It was around there. Sixty-five, I thought, sixty-seven, I guess.
Right, and then we had it reduced because we didn't think we needed to clear as much brush, so it's probably gonna stay at that now.
And so far, you've raised about twenty?
Yeah.
So, what happens if you don't get the grant?
Then we would proceed, proceed with fundraising, not just at a local level like we've been doing. We have a brochure that we want to get out. We will get it out in the town and throughout the internet and proceed to get more funding.
So, I, I, and I'm just curious why, why the fundraising hasn't been ongoing throughout this whole period?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll step in here from the Historical Society. We really did fundraise throughout the whole period. We started with train shows, and we had two train shows. There was a, I, I don't remember the exact dates, but maybe two thousand and twelve was the first one. And then the next one happened, maybe some, we were gonna have it right around Hurricane Sandy, and everything was flooded, so we had to hold off on that. And we had them the next year, and that was the first of our big fundraisers. And then we've been having concerts at the, at the senior building and now at the American Legion. And then we were, because this process really has gotten into gear now with the plans from Kurt Ludwig and Brown and Glenn and the, we know, we're moving, we're really in gear, like I said, like a train, trains moving along. So, we really wanted to do a lot of fundraising this year, and, and right before COVID, we had all these different plans, and then COVID hit. And, and it kind of just stopped us down in our tracks for, for, another train reference.
And this is all under the Historical Society?
Well, the Historical Society and the Raritan River Train Group have been meeting jointly, and so we've really been helping them.
No, so I ask because, you know, the Historical Preservation Committee is part of, is a borough committee, right? And so, you've been, you've been meeting all along, and, and Councilman Dixon is your liaison. So, have you been keeping him apprised of the plans for the Historical Preservation Committee as well as the tangential to the railroad project?
So, Historical Society and Historical Preservation Committee are two separate entities?
Ah, okay.
And, 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 and we're, we're the private, you know, the Historical Society is not a.
Okay, got you. Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think, I, I haven't, I haven't been in contact with Ron Dixon, but I know Dorian is.
Okay, great, thank you.
I, I have a quick question here to Barbara, Dorian, and Ken. Being part of the Finance Committee for Milltown, can you just give me best case scenario, worst case scenario on what this would cost the borough? I would say, if you get the grant, what the borough's responsibility is. If you don't get the grant, you know, what kind of money are we talking about here that the borough's going to have to either lay out upfront, if it's even possible, or not have to lay out if, if everything goes smoothly and you get everything? Is, is there a number in mind that we're talking about here?
I, I wasn't thinking that we were asking the borough for any money to do this.
I, I, I understand that, but let's just say there is a responsibility for the borough to take on after you go through a certain amount of steps, and you don't have the money, you didn't fundraise enough. Now, it's three quarters of the way done. Are, are we gonna be left to, to fill that gap and stuff like that?
I don't, I don't know, you guys?
That's not what we were ever envisioning, to be honest with you. I mean, we, we felt, and I gotta say, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not a Milltown resident, but I, I grew up in Saraval. I actually used to deliver bread to Milltown, so I, when I was in college at Rutgers. So, you know, I know, I know the town, I know the town pretty well, and when I first got involved in this, we approached it, like I said, from a historical standpoint, because it's such a unique structure. It's one of the last remaining structures, the Raritan River Railroad. And I think you're really actually gifted that it, you know, as, as, as a town, if, if you're historically minded, you're gifted to have an asset like that, because this was not only just a station that a railroad used to store freight in, it was originally a passenger station. And you have to think back to the time when this station was built, which was actually nineteen, right, we, we can date it to around between nineteen twelve and nineteen fifteen. It's not, it's not the eighteen eighty-eight structure. That was probably more a temporary structure that was built. And this station was used as a gateway, not only for the, not only for people to arrive in Milltown and, and work at Michelin and, and the various industries in Milltown, but also for the people of Milltown to leave Milltown and, and actually could visit the entire country at that time. I mean, you gotta remember, there was no, there were very, very little automobiles and things like that. So, so it wasn't, it was, it was such an asset at the time for the people of Milltown to be able to travel from Milltown to anywhere in the country, because they could take a train to South Amboy, and from there they could get a train to, to New York or Philadelphia, and from there they could get anywhere. So, I, I, I state that because you, we were stressing the importance, that, that was the importance from a historical perspective when we first started having these train shows. And by the way, Barb, I don't know if you knew, we did have a couple at the Senior Center before we started doing them at the American Legion. So, I, I believe we actually have had four shows in total.
Okay.
But anyway, but anyway, getting back to my point, so, so we first were stressing it from a historical perspect, perspective. I was very impressed by the people in Milltown coming out to support the train shows and how interested they were in the project. We really had a true outpouring of interest in the project. So, we never really envisioned that we would be, you know, relying on the, the borough, you know, for any, you know, monetary support, just really, you know, support of the projects that we can go ahead and apply for these grants and, you know, get this thing going. It, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. You can't have one, you know, you can't have one as the other. We can't, we can't have an assurance that we're gonna be able to complete this project unless we have an opportunity to try. And that's really where we're, I, I feel that's where we're at now. We're, we're finally to a point where we have, you know, we spent some of the money on, on getting, you know, professionals involved. You know, we need a professional engineer, we need an architect, you know, we've expended those monies in the hope that this was, you know, we could get this project kicked off. And we always assumed that this thing would be, you know, once, once we get the thing moved, that, that's really the biggest phase that requires, you know, professional help. You know, we're, we're, we're volunteers, and we could get other volunteers from town, but we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna attempt to move the station, you know, by ourselves, or, or with, you know, volunteers from the town. But once we have it, you know, across the street and on a foundation, you know, we, we firmly believe that we'll be able to get a, a, a great outpouring of support of people to help us first, you know, renovate it so that it's, you know, weather tight and, you know, fix windows and things like that. And then the phase three would ultimately be the restoration, which would be trying to get it, you know, as historically, you know, intact, you know, as possible. That would be more like, you know, an interior, you know, restoration, you know, that type of thing. So, so that's, you know, that's why we've never, you know, really looked for a grand total, or we've looked for, you know, anywhere, you know, outside of our organizations to, you know, to, to look for someone who's gonna pick, like, say, it all sounds like I'm hearing, you know, pick up the tab. We're, we're not looking for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Right, and that, that was my understanding as well, and it goes back to my original question is, it's county-owned land. It's a five oh one C three that wants to move it. Well, I, I don't understand where the borough even comes in on that. If you, if the county has the land and they want to let you use it, great.
Because we're in charge of managing it.
We have, but, yeah, I, I mean, and the other, the other two things that are there, were there already, right? So, we have to give the okay to, to do what? To manage it?
Well, when we, sorry, when we first planted the trees and did the pathway, we had to do a resolution to approve that and that plan. And then the county received it. Then they, you know, approved it on their end that we could do the trees and the pathway, just like the barricade that's up there by the Eagle Scout, and then also the butterfly, and it's up, well, so we.
We did, we did that. You know, they, you have a resolution from two years ago, or not even two years ago, right?
Right, from twenty eighteen.
Were included in the, the electrical substation plans, I, I, I believe, if I'm, if I'm not wrong. I think all those other things were included in that.
So, if we have to manage it, does that put the borough on resources in play for ma, maintaining it?
No, all, all we were required to do was cut the grass and plow the snow and clean the sidewalks, and not, not any kind of maintenance, just, just maintain the property so the county parks people didn't have to come do it. That's what the agreement says. But I'm not the attorney. Peter could speak up to that if you would like.
Hey, listen, Randy, you probably know that agreement better than I did. You were, I wasn't around when you guys entered it, but being frankly, it, it does say that. It also indicates that anything else we want to try to do, we need their approval for, so that it becomes who's, who's a sponsor of the project, and, you know, what are we doing there or not doing there, and what's our involvement? You know, and, and that's something that we gotta flesh out, I would believe, before, you know, we get too deep in this, because looking over the, you know, the TAP application, twenty twenty, they want a resolution of support from the municipality. You know, the, the sample they give indicates, you know, maintenance of the facility, once constructed, will be taken care of by the municipality. So, I don't know if this program, if that resolution is, you know, a sample and can be changed or, or what the obligations will or won't be, but I think it would be incumbent to get your arms around what that is, especially if, as has been indicated, the grant application is gonna need to be sponsored by the borough.
Is that an absolute requirement?
I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know the grant, you know, parameters. I will admit, I have some information that Ms. Kerber's provided to the borough through you, Madam Mayor, but.
Right, so, but.
To know the program.
Dorian, why is it that the borough has to be involved in applying for the grant?
Uh, at the bottom, it says, other nonprofits directly, are not directly eligible to apply for the grant. However, they can partner with the eligible local public agency, which would be you, the borough. That's what it says on the.
It couldn't be the county?
Pardon?
You couldn't, you couldn't partner with the county?
It don't do.
Guess we can ask.
Right, um. I'm also. Just concerned about, you know, the borough, the county obviously has deeper pockets than the, the borough does, you know. So, I mean, while, you know, I applaud all of your efforts, you know, two things that jump to mind is, this just came up a few weeks ago, and the deadline is in, in two weeks. And the second thing is, you know, there was a resolution. I understand that you, you've moved ahead. And, you know, it's something that, you know, we're, we appreciate you coming to answer all the council's questions, but it sounds like the council has some questions and certainly has some concerns about getting too deep into applying for a grant that could or could not, you know, expose us to having to expend borough resources for this going forward for maintenance or, or whatever. So, you know, while I, I applaud all of your efforts and certainly wish you the best, you know, I think the council will have to take under advisement how, how we will, you know, if we would want to proceed in getting involved with any grant request.
Okay. I personally just wanted to clarify really quick. We would be the LPA, the Local Public Agency, as mentioned in this Sage application, because that's saying that there's a maintenance commitment that. Do you go through with this?
Um, it says, the nonprofit entity responsible for the administration of local transportation safety programs, like includes a nonprofit entity implementing construction planning and designing infrastructure-related projects. But the state DOTs and NPOs are not eligible entities under this twenty, whatever the numbers are. Therefore, they are not eligible for project sponsors for this. However, they may partner with an eligible entity project sponsor to carry out the project. It does, does, says, says, local public agency. I can inquire about county.
What, what entity did you put when you applied for a grant the last time?
It was the Borough of Milltown in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen, sixteen, and eighteen.
Right, um, because it says, under responsible charge, that the federal regulation requires the local public agencies, LPA, to provide a full-time way to be in responsible charge of federal aid construction projects. So, we would need to hire, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. We would need to hire someone as for this app, grant application? A full-time employee?
No, I, I would do the application, but it would need to be submitted by the borough if you do approve of this. It says, a nonprofit entity is responsible for the administration of local transportation safety programs, but it includes whether you do the construction, planning, and designing infrastructure. So, if a nonprofit applies, yes, that would be responsible for all that. That's what it sits down in the FAQs. But then again, you would need to have a local public agency. I can inquire to see if the county would certainly support that initiative. But we still would need a resolution to apply for the current year and second half of twenty twenty-one. If you approve a ca, a resolution today, we have usually one year to apply for any grants, whether it's foundation, local banks in the area that are stationed in Milltown. They have programs too that we can also apply for. Certain ones will support preservation, certain ones are, you know, food, banks. We would certainly look for the right ones.
I just think that, you know, I, I, I appreciate that, and, you know, I think, I mean, it's, it's, I'll ask the council's pleasure, but it's something that's been, as you said, two thousand and twelve, fourteen, sixteen, and eighteen. And, you know, what's happened? I mean, what, you know, if you want to move ahead with your project, that's great. But, you know, I, I think that we've all asked some, some valid questions, and there's still some information. I, I personally would feel a little hesitant to jump in too much with something that could potentially, you know, open up the borough resources to be, needed to be tapped into. Does the council have any comments on that?
Do we have copies of the grant applications?
It was sent in a email from.
All the old ones? I don't, I don't think, I didn't see that.
I didn't see that either.
And the Borough of Milltown did that, Dorian?
Yes, that's correct.
Peter, do you have copies of the grant application?
Do I?
Yes.
No, I, I have very limited anything. The only thing I have is what the mayor's forwarded over that was provided by Ms. Kerber. I mean, I, the, the borough should have the grant applications if the borough filed for them. I, not something, I mean, for a practical perspective, I don't usually see grant applications at all. They're usually things that are, you know, found by a member of the council or by someone in administration and.
Who, who did that, Dorian? Was it the BA or the clerk?
Uh, yes, that was through the BA.
I, I should say that.
Pre Jeanette, right?
Mayor, if I can, I could say that our office submitted four applications over the last several years.
Oh, you did, Mike. Oh, you're involved too.
Three TAP grants and one DOT, almost like a local aid project, which has been replaced pretty much with the TAP grants at this point. And I have copies. Should you desire to have copies of that?
Oh, thank you.
And what are the grant, the grant amounts that are being applied for?
The minimum would be awarded would be a hundred fifty thousand dollars up to four hundred thousand dollars per grant.
But don't we need to have some parameters on what the money's for?
Yes, we would have to submit a budget and detailed budget of all that, yes.
Well, we don't even have any of that yet, right?
We have most except for the restoration. I had, I need that one. We have most except for the restoration. I had, I need that one more estimate.
No, I mean, we, you, that's not something that you forwarded along to, to the council, right?
No, I, I didn't forward all those estimates yet, no. But I can.
So to apply, well, okay, yeah, okay, thanks.
Mr. McClellan, you mind if I ask you to put a different hat on right now?
Of course not. Mr. Nadya, I'll do my best.
Just to help out uh, these good people here, is there, is there a number of sixty-five to sixty-seven thousand close or in a, in a, in a ballpark or are they off?
We have an estimate in our file from 2018, which is approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's limited with regard to uh, the extent of reinforcement the building would need, as Council President Farkas indicated. Whenever you relocate or move a building like that, the first effort is to reinforce the building. That uh, we really haven't done a structural analysis, which would be required. Uh, unfortunately, um, these things get complicated, especially when you're talking about a public building. So um, the two-ten is from 2018, it's already two years old. And uh, that's subject to the accurate or internal investigation of the building. As every year goes by, the construction or the interior wood members begin to deteriorate, as indicated earlier today.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, I pulled up uh, the Brown and Glenn invoice. We separated from the move that's put the foundation and securing it. It does come out to thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, and the details of scope of the work, I thought I sent this one to you. If not, I can. Um, slope cutting to create the berm at the location of the new foundation install. Six mil vapor barrier, two inch concrete slab throughout the new crawl space. And it has all the details on it. And then the move would be relocating is a separate expense that we have to still get. Which we did get, but we would have to update that, those uh, estimates. And the team is working on that.
Any prices in there for removing the dirt, trucking the dirt away, testing the dirt, anything like that?
Um, we were gonna ask where, um, uh, no, it doesn't include that.
Hey, Dorian, can I jump in? Dorian, can I jump in on that subject?
Oh, construction debris, yeah, that includes the, yeah, I guess so.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, there, this uh, on the last uh, civil plan, um, it was, uh, there's very little grade uh, changing. Um, it's basically a little bit of cutting and then it's gonna be a uh, you know, the foundation wall. And then it's going to be kind of, you know, filled back in and, and re-graded for, you know, proper uh, proper drainage slope. So, so if you look at the civil drawing, there's really very little cutting. So there's, there's really not, there's really not earth removal.
Aren't you gonna put it at grade? Didn't I see somewhere that the uh, the foundation's gonna be at grade?
Well, well, the footings will go, will be sub-grade. And uh, then, then the, the wa- the walls, the foundation walls built up on the footing. And then the uh, the, the fill is, is graded back in towards, towards the station to, you know, to present the proper drainage. So it's, it's a little bit of both, but it's, it's, it's not really going down. There's not, it's not like a basement. It's not, there's not really like an excavation here.
No, but there's currently a hill there.
It's gonna be built on the berm.
So if you build it on the berm, how is it at grade?
Well, the berm is the existing grade. Uh, the, the height of the, the berm is the existing grade.
So you're gonna build it on top of the berm?
Yes, that was stated at the beginning of the presentation.
Um, and who's gonna do this work, just out of curiosity?
Well, we have estimates from Brown and Glenn.
Brown and Glenn are uh, carpenters. They're not, they're, they don't do earthwork. Uh, I, I think just, just, you can do what you want to do, but I would go, I would go back and I would really look at this because uh, I'm not an engineer, but I don't think that's gonna fly.
Well, I'm not really understanding your, your thought because there really is no earth mo- removal. They're really just building, uh, they're really just putting in a footing and some concrete block. It's, it's not anything more than you do for a simple house. And pour a, a, basically a dust cap. The, the crawl space has a concrete cap, it's basically dust cap to keep uh, you know, bugs, termites, whatever, out of there. So it's, it's not really, we're not talking about any, any type of major excavation or re-grading. That berm was actually built by the railroad to have a level berm opposite. Uh, there was tracks. There was a trestle in where the parking lot is, where coal was delivered. So that, you know, that, that area was, was graded to, to, to that elevation and, and level, you know, many years ago. So it's really the existing grade.
Okay. And it was all compacted? You have all the stability's all okay?
It was, if, I, I just gotta tell you one thing. I mean, if it, it was, if it wasn't compacted by, by decades of hundreds of tons of coal cars running across that berm, I don't know how else you could be more compacted than it probably is.
Listen, my, my, my point here, my, my, all I'm trying to say is I would hate to see an organization with a, with a worthy cause get into something over their head. And it just appears to me that you are over your head on this. I don't think you're, I think you are underestimating the cost of this. And I would hate to see good money get thrown away on something that, that you can't at least get your first phase done. That, that's my questioning. That's my line of questioning. I think there's some anticipated costs that you're gonna come up to.
If I could just respectfully uh, respond to that, that's why I said it, to begin with, my, my part of the, the, the conversation was that, you know, we knew for this part of it that we were not, we were not qualified to, to do this work. So that's why we, you know, we pursued local professionals and uh, you know, local contractors who have expertise, you know, not only, you know, with this type of work, but in your town to do this. And that's, that's what we presented.
Okay, but you have, you have a cost estimate of sixty-seven thousand dollars from people who don't do this type of work versus our borough engineer who has a two-year-old estimate for two hundred something thousand dollars. Which one do you think you should go with?
Well, I, I was actually, quite frankly, I was under the impression that Brown and Glenn has done a lot of, of this type of work in your town. Is that incorrect?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't, I don't believe so. Again, how many historic buildings have they moved?
But it's basically like building a foundation for a house, a small house. It's a single story.
On a berm.
About eighteen, it's about eighteen feet wide by about fifty feet long.
Again, if you think, if you think that it's a worthy cost of uh, use of your money, I have no issue with it. Like I said, I, I would hate to see you throw away good money, but um, that's, that's my only objection to this.
Well, uh, to wrap up, um, it's getting late. We, you know, if, if anybody has any, you know, questions, I mean, you've given a, given us a lot more information than probably we've ever been aware of before, and we really appreciate it. You know, it, it seems like the council's gonna have to take this under advisement unless anybody wants, you know, to act on anything this evening. I think there's, you know, we're, we still, we got a lot of information tonight. Any, any comments?
I just wanted to say something. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Includes the full restoration, the moving, the foundation. So that's the full amount um, that, you know, Mike is providing, and that's what he provided in the past. And in terms of uh, the roofing, we've got that secured. Um, the foundation plans are done, the site plan and site survey plans, those are completed. And we just need to get the updated cost for the moving. Um, and the restoration, we will make sure we get that for uh, you. And so do you have that information, more updated costs?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we thank you for taking the time to present this evening. Uh, and for also, you know, getting questions from the council. I think that's always the best way to do it is to come and so everybody can ask their question all at once. I think in this case, it would have been helpful to have a little more uh, lead-up time. You know, had we had a little more than uh, two weeks to a- to act on this, it would have been uh, helpful. And also so we could have, you folks could have done a little more of your due diligence to check with the county and other entities, you know, before coming to the Borough of Milltown, but um, we will uh, certainly, you know, take it under advisement. We wish, of course, we wish you well. Right, council?
Of course, of course, yeah.
No, I mean about, you know, I, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's anything we can act on this evening. We, I don't think we have enough information.
Agreed.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you. So now that will close our discussion. Part of the uh, meeting, and we will move on to a um, public hearing. So now I am going to ask uh, the clerk to please read ordinance twenty dash one four nine four by title only.
Uh, this is a public hearing for which the uh, introduction was on ten twenty-six twenty twenty for an ordinance amending the revised general ordinance of, is, I'm sorry, ordinances of the Borough of Milltown to consolidate municipal planning and zoning powers in the Milltown Planning Board and expanding the alternate membership thereof.
Thank you. So uh, we would ask, so, so since it is a public hearing, if any member of the public.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, thank you, Borough Attorney.
Introduction, second.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry. Um, so you've heard the introduction, council. What is your pleasure?
This the first or the second time?
Second.
Second time.
I make a motion that the ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and published according to law.
Second.
Okay, we have a uh, motion by Councilman Magadi, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Now, we can ask for uh, audience.
If any member of the public wishes to make a comment on this ordinance, raise your hand. Perhaps our not on your phone.
Oh, this is part, one of the, that part of time where we have to get the instructions of how to raise hands on the Zoom call.
That's right. And I believe we have someone.
We do. Hold on, hold on.
Come on, maybe we have faith in you. You got it.
Yeah. Can you see it now?
No, you gotta share.
I think you gotta share the screen.
Say, okay, just I'm like, oh, wrong sequence.
There it is.
Yep, perfect.
Right. That is how you raise your hand.
Yes, raise your hand.
Ms. Milburn has her hand raised.
Okay, Dawn Milburn.
Hold on one second. Uh, this is. I think with. I think when I have this up, I don't have access to the participants, so hold on a sec.
Yeah, you could stop sharing the screen and then we can put it back up if we want to ask if anyone else wants to raise their hands after.
Okay, I'm sorry. And who was it that?
Dawn Milburn.
Dawn Milburn.
Oh, I think I have you there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can hear you down.
I'm sorry, I'm on my tiny cell phone. This is Dawn Milburn, twelve Desmet Avenue.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your address for me?
Sure. Twelve Desmet.
Thank you.
Avenue. Congratulations and welcome to Milltown, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, I just had um, a question, I guess, about the consolidation of the committees. I, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, part of the um, the beauty of having two different committees, the planning and the zoning committee was, it was kind of, I felt like it was kind of a way to keep things in check. And also a little bit of a slowdown. I guess I'm a little concerned from like environmental commission viewpoint. What kind of protections are we going to have in consolidating these two committees? You know, we're gonna be losing a lot of really, you know, active, trained volunteers for one thing. And then it's also going to maybe speed up the process of things maybe being approved that we may as community committees not have a chance to really evaluate. So I'm a little concerned about eliminating one of the checks in combining these things. And are you going to also adjust the number of committee members you're going to have? Because now you have these two committees with several, you know, um, active members. How are we gonna work that out? And how are we gonna protect ourselves from things being pushed along too quickly with the consolidation?
Madam Mayor, you tell me. What do you want?
Who wants to take?
I'm happy to do it unless somebody else wants it. The consolidation of your planning and your zoning boards does not change the timeframe for anything moving forward. All it does is uh, rather than have two boards that each have discrete functions uh, for the borough, you have one board that will exercise both of those, both of those functions. So instead of having uh, variances, um, and use variances rendered by the zoning board, you will now have those things heard by your planning board. Um, if your planning board was to hear a use variance or a D variance, as they're known, for a density or a floor area ratio, your uh, nine-member board, which is your planning board, which includes your council member and your mayor, would become a seven-member board because the mayor and the council member are not per- are, are not permitted to participate in those types of hearings. Um, in order to try to balance out the fact that we're creating a singular board, what the law allows the council to do and what the council has chosen to do is expand the number of alternate members the board has. So the nine-member planning board, instead of having two alternate members, will now have four alternate members.
Well, that's helpful. Okay. And is that like an option you have or is that a definite given? You're going to have those four alternate members?
Well, they, well, it's, it's an option for the mayor and council to decide they'd like to pursue. That is an option that they have chosen uh, that was available to them and they've included in this ordinance revision.
Okay, that's, that sounds a little bit more promising. And how are you gonna go about choosing, I mean, with all those members, how are you going to go about choosing like who to whittle away to form this new combined board?
Presently, there is a planning board and all of the powers of, for land use are gonna be consolidated in that planning board. And what will happen, as I would imagine, um, as members come off and go on, you'll, you'll add the alternate members that are necessary to complete the full complement of nineteen, of thirteen people. And, you know, it'll move forward and, and under that way. I mean, like any other uh, appointment procedures for the two individual boards.
Okay, so could you just remind me, so how many presently are on the planning board and the zoning committees? I'm just not really sure. Did you say there are seven on each one right now?
Right now, you have a nine-member planning board with two alternates and a seven-member zoning board of adjustment.
Sixteen. Okay, so then there's gonna be like a, a shortage of like maybe four people uh, in the difference? Is that what it is? I'm just adding the four.
You're assuming that everybody who is part of each board wanted to move forward, so, you know.
Okay.
Planning board has recently seen um, some members step down, so.
And what was your purpose? Um, why was this first proposed to combine, to join the two together, consolidate?
It's uh, logistically and economically more efficient.
Okay, understandable. Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
Any other comments? Okay. I don't see anyone, see no more.
If we wanna throw the instructions back up, I think everyone who was here before was already, already seen these instructions. But just in case, this is how you raise your hand in a Zoom call.
Right.
For those of you on the phone, you have to press star nine because obviously you can't see the PowerPoint.
Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will close the comments. Any discussion from the council? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
If you're, if you're moving to adopt, you need to close the public hearing, is that?
Yes, yes. Oh, no.
We already did the motion in the second before we started.
It's, it's a logistical. You have a new clerk, so your clerk is asking you to make a motion to, in a second, to close the public hearing on the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, so will we move to close the public hearing?
Go move. Second.
Okay, so a motion by Councilman, Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Magadi to close the public portion of the hearing.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, on the actual ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
No, I believe again, I'm going to ask for the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Right.
I think we've already had the motion.
We did that, we did that already.
That was the initial motion.
That was your very initial one before you opened your public hearing. Okay, I'm sorry, your sequence, that's it. Okay, thank you.
They, they move, they second, they open, they vote, usually.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you, Peter.
Going forward, we're, we'll be flexible.
No problem. Councilman President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Magadi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
And Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
The adoption for the ordinance passes its final and it will be advertised.
Okay, go move. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please follow the instructions, raise your hand or hit star nine, say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Seeing none?
You got one, right?
Oh, one? Or is that still from?
I don't know if.
No, I think, I think Dawn just raised her hand again.
Oh, okay, Dawn.
Okay, hold on, I have to.
I, I did not raise my hand. If I did, I'm sorry.
Can you put your hand down? Dawn, can you put your hand down?
I wish I could figure out how to do it. Let me try. Sorry, guys.
Hit the hand. There you go.
Sorry.
All right. So seeing no comments from the audience. Let me go back to here. We will go to the resolutions. Oh, no, the bill list. Will the clerk please read Resolution twenty dash two oh four by title?
Resolution twenty dash two oh four states authorizing the payment of bills, claims and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of fifty-nine thousand seven eighty-eight oh five.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that the resolution be adopted.
Okay. I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Magadi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
And Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to pay the bills.
Go moved. Thank you. Next, we will have a consent, a consent resolution has been prepared to cover the resolutions listed on the agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. Okay? Yes, good.
If we could pull twenty dash two oh eight. Is a resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown granting permission to film at Mill Pond Park?
Sure. Okay, anything else? All right, so if the, let's see. Well, I'm sorry, Ron, did you have something?
Ron? How come? Who? Ron? Okay.
Will the clerk please read the consent resolution except for twenty dash two oh eight? Excluding twenty dash two oh eight.
Well, your resolution twenty dash two oh five, the approval of consent agenda for November ninth, two thousand and two Borough Council meeting, whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting. And whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Milltown, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the clerk. And they include numbers two thousand, twenty-two oh six through twenty-two oh seven.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Magadi, second by Councilman Peretti. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Magadi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
And Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so will the clerk please read Resolution twenty dash two zero eight by title?
This is a resolution twenty dash two oh eight is a resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown granting permission to film at Mill Pond Park.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Magadi. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to wish Noel good luck with this project. He's actually here at the meeting tonight. I know, I wasn't sure if he had wanted to speak to the resol, uh, not the resolution, to his project at all, but he had described it to me and it was very, it was, it's a nice project that he's doing. He's doing a film project here down at Mill Pond Park. That's all.
And if I could jump in for half a second. When this popped up, Councilwoman Newbauer reached out to me probably a couple of weeks ago regarding the request. And I noted that we do not have a procedure in the borough for requests for filming. I know from my prior experience working with the Tatcha of Scataway that they have a whole framework for how they happen, what you need to do, what the parameters are. And I think it's something that the council may want to explore for the future so that we have a framework in place and people who want to do it understand what the undertaking is and what they need to do. So with the council's consent, I can start the ball rolling on that.
Okay.
Fine. Can I ask that Jeanette, just, if not already done so, fill in the police chief on, it says that Public Works and the business administrator is okay with it, but if you can just let Chief Cannelly know, that'd be great as well.
Yeah, it makes sense.
So we'll amend the whereas paragraph input from risk management administrator Borough Attorney and the chief of police may be necessary?
Yeah, just in case people are calling down saying, who's filming going on?
Any other discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Magadi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries. And, Peter, can I just have a notation if you are going, are we going to make that change?
Yeah, I think that that was an acknowledged change to it, so I can, I don't actually have a revisable version of it, but if you get it to me, I'll make the revision and get it back to you however you want to work it.
That would be great. I will do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to reports from standing committees. We'll start with the Department of Finance Administration and Planning, Councilman Brandon.
Madam Mayor, I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Public Safety, Councilman Nick Magadi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I have two short reports this evening. Senior Center Report, November ninth, two thousand and twenty. All knitted and crocheted and additional some Christmas items have been collected and will continue to be collected and dispersed throughout the year. A special thank you to all of our seniors that worked hard and contributed to all those in need. Between Milltown and the Middlesex County, there are many programs our seniors can still take advantage of. For information or if you want to volunteer for some of, some of your time, please contact Debbie Cuddy at the Senior Center. November fifth, two thousand and twenty, monthly Milltown Police Department report. Between October second, two thousand and twenty and November fifth, two thousand and twenty, police have responded to one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine calls for service. During this period, police conducted one hundred and sixty-eight radar details in numerous locations and conducted two hundred and ninety-five motor vehicle stops. The Milltown Police Department remains in compliance with all mandated training and directives set forth by the State of New Jersey Attorney General's Office and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, most recently completing use of force training, firearms qualifications, domestic violence training and some community relations training. I would like to commend the Milltown Fire Department and Milltown Rescue Squad for their response and action during a house fire on October thirteenth. These volunteer agencies continuously and selfishly respond rapidly and professionally, which undoubtedly reduced loss of life and property. Thank you for your service. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns and non-emergent type calls to seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-one-one-zero-zero. Police will determine a necessary response. Walking complaints are discouraged due to COVID-nineteen concerns and restrictions. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use nine-one-one. Residents are reminded to report any concerns or complaints by using the official borough website or by calling the police department directly. The Milltown Police Department does not monitor and will not react to respond, or respond to comments or complaints posted on any third-party social media sites. Chief Brian Cannelly. I have a separate little comment here. If everybody would indulge me for a second. As Christmas approaches, I would like to remind all residents during this pandemic, you might want to do the extra something for the holiday season. Please, I can't say it many times, please be very careful when setting up any holiday lights or holiday decorations for twenty. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And you speak from experience with that, so.
I certainly do.
We appreciate, and the other, the only other thing, Nick, that I was going to say is the Fire Department invited us all to their, well, they moved the trucks in on November first to the new facility and it was a very nice ceremony where they backed the trucks in and we thanked them for including us. I will say that a lot of people over the last year or so have asked, when are the, when's, when are the new buildings going to be open? When's everything moving in? Can we see it? And I had said quite a while ago, probably right after I was elected, that I'd love to do like an open house and let everybody go in and take a look before everybody gets moved in. Well, now, unfortunately, because of COVID, we can't do that. You know, at some point, maybe we'll have some sort of celebration, but we were talking about maybe doing a virtual tour. So we could have Councilman Magadi and Councilwoman Newbauer, who are Public Safety and DPW, go with the Fire Chief and the head of Public Works and we could get Russ to do some filming and do a tour so that everybody can see what the facility looks like, since it's not open to the, you know, everybody can't walk around yet. And we'll do that sometime before the end of the year, when they get the furniture in and they're just a little more settled in. So we'll, we'll have more information about that in the, in the next few weeks.
Yes, my apologies, Madam Mayor. I did forget to mention the Fire, the Fire Department is operating all four trucks out of the new firehouse. They are, there is no furniture, they're missing appliances right now, so we're not a hundred percent moved into that facility. When that happens, I will surely let you know. But they are operating the four trucks out of that particular facility. It was a very nice ceremony. I've said it before, I'm not embarrassed for the fact that I don't have the gene, but there is a gene that all of our volunteers have, especially our Fire Department, that they, they do things, they go above and beyond for the residents of Milltown. I appreciated their, their small, short little ceremony, but we'll definitely do something a little better for them once we're a hundred percent in that building.
And we wish everybody well in their new, new facility. Thanks, Nick. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Utilities, Council President Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the Electrical Department, electric service was disconnected for the trailers at the New Jersey Turnpike Facility. The transformer was removed for future use on another project. Sparking was reported at a home on Cleveland Avenue. Troubleshooting revealed loose wires at the service connection. Repairs were made. A new electric meter was installed at a home on North Main Street to replace a defective one. The lighting controller was adjusted for the lights at the Pardon Avenue tennis courts to accommodate the fall tennis clinics. An electrical service was installed for a new home on Clay Street. Streetlights were repaired at the following locations. Benhard Road and Burke Street, Columbia Avenue, Clay Street and South Main and West Boach. A broken guide wire was repaired on East Boach and South Main. Verizon was notified and made the necessary repairs. Efforts continued to move the Electrical Department's tools and inventory into the new DPW building. Our fleet of four line trucks received their annual ANSI and dielectric inspections. Line clearance has been scheduled for early November and will take care of streets and areas south of Washington Avenue on both sides of JFK Drive. The Electric Department has been assisting with tree removal project, with tree removal on the project on Tracy Drive by providing line hose on our primary wires at the trees being removed. And for the Department of Water and Sewer, along with all daily pump checks, work orders and markouts, the Water Sewer Department has the following report. Three water meters have been installed and cross-training took place for three laborers from Public Works during the process of installation. Cross-training also took place with DPW in meter reading, station maintenance and markouts. The Water Sewer Supervisor attended a Zoom meeting concerning the Squibb property. Weekly water samples were completed. And as always, please check Channel fifteen and milltownnj.org for water sewer updates. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Next, we will move on to the Department of Public Works, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, for the Department of Public Works, I have the following to report. Along with all curbside collections, DPW has the following to report. Clay Street drainage and road repair has been completed. A catch basin on Rosewood. A catch basin on Rosewood Drive has been repaired. Catch basin lids have been cleaned in order to prevent flooding during the October 29th to 30th storm. A squirrel has been safely and humanely removed from the senior center. A roof repair has been made at the senior center to discourage any further unwanted visitors. A fire hydrant, uh, fire hydrant painting has been ongoing across town. Uh, street sweeping has also been taken place and is ongoing. And the DPW participated in this year's trunk or treat by handing out candy, recycling coloring books, and clean community goodies. The shredding day results are in. Milltown shredded a total of 19,100 pounds of paper and 521 residents from all over the county participated in the day. Leaf bags will remain available until mid-November, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Please check Channel 15 and milltownnj.org for any more DPW updates, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman Ron Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. And next we'll move on to the Department of Recreation, Councilman James Peretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First for SAC, um, please be advised that the Milltown SAC program has unfortunately received less responses for SAC registration than anticipated. Therefore, the Milltown SAC program is going to be canceled at this time, and we will revisit reopening for January 2021. Refunds will be issued upon council's approval and checks will be sent via the mail. We will communicate when registration will open once we have details for the public. Thank you for your understanding during this time. For Recreation, Fall Soccer will finish this Saturday, November 14th. We want to especially thank all the volunteer coaches and the parents for their amazing support and commitment to run this program. Please continue to follow the social distancing and COVID-19 guidelines on and around the field. The Fall Tennis Clinic will continue until this Friday, November 13th, using the rain date, please plan accordingly. We will communicate information regarding winter youth basketball and men's basketball registration as soon as it becomes available. Milltown's annual Christmas tree lighting will take place on Friday, December 4th, 2020, details will follow. We thank everyone for their patience during this time and continue to pray for everyone's safety and well-being. We ask that you still abide by the social distancing orders and wear your mask where applicable, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next we will move on to our professional reports, first we'll start with our business administrator, Jeanette Larison.
I have no report other than to say, uh, welcome aboard Mimi, I look forward to working with you and appreciate everything you were able to do today for us, so, thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to our Borough Engineer, Mr. Mike McClellan.
Briefly, Madam Mayor, just two items tonight, uh, first is the, just to update your arc erosion control, prevent application has been submitted to NJDP on schedule, waiting to hear comments. Item two is we continue to work with the MTA on the regional wastewater solutions for the borough, just in a way of update, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you very much. And next we have our Borough Attorney, Mr. Peter Vignola.
I have no separate report, everything I had to say, I've said already.
Thank you, you did a good job, appreciate it. Okay, so now, after that, back to the, we will move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business that they, they would like to bring before, to the meeting tonight? Seeing none, I will ask if any member of the council has any new business to bring before the councils tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to audience comments. If any member of the audience would like to, uh, make a comment, please provide your name and address and follow the instructions by, to speak, to raise your hand, or press star nine if you're on the phone. I can't see. I don't see any, you see any, Mimi?
No, I was just wondering if Courtney Williams had asked, but I don't, I think I might have been.
Can you hear me?
Hi Courtney, yes, we can.
I can, did you ask to speak, Courtney?
Yes, yes, sorry, I accidentally, um, my mouth is frozen at the moment, so. Um, uh, hi everyone, Courtney Williams, 318 Clay, um, I do have a question, if it's possible that, um, if the council would consider maybe having regular updates on any kind of, um, upticks on COVID cases in the community and kind of have a little bit more of a emphasis on any kind of public health issues, maybe just a quick, um, rundown so everybody, just for public record, can, um, have that knowledge available to them if they're listening in? Um, is that something the tech council would consider being able to kind of speak to, um, at every meeting?
So, Ron, your, um, Health and Social Services, any comment? Well, so Courtney, I will say that, um, we, when the pandemic first started back in March, uh, most of the numbers that we get come from the county, so we had, you know, linked into the county on our website and all of the numbers, the, the cases, the, the, each time there was an uptick, uh, for the first, I'd say, three months, I used to get a call, whenever we would get a new case, I would actually get a call from someone on the county, however, we didn't keep the numbers, the county did, so they were just sort of telling us as a, as an FYI, and, and that's still the case, so the county, uh, maintains the numbers, you know, we could certainly, you know, could take a look at the website, the, uh, if we have the most up-to-date information, and, you know, certainly do, um, you know, look to, uh, engage to make sure that we're, you know, being as safe as possible. But a lot of that comes, yeah, go ahead Jeanette.
No, I was just gonna say, if I could interject, all the links that we have on our, uh, the COVID page, they would be the, you know, once you click on it, it's gonna bring you to the various, uh, whether it's the county or the state, uh, Board of Health, or it's gonna, the CDC, so that'll all be the updated information, and what I can, you know, also share with Ms. Williams is that, a- as the mayor has said, I know I personally have not been getting any updated information from the county, uh, that stopped months ago, so we don't, I, I can tell you from, uh, the borough standpoint that we don't really have any information to share, other than what's already being reported by the county and the state.
And if I may add to both of you young ladies, uh, most of the information that we do have is confidential, and a lot of it we're not allowed to release.
Obviously, particular information we can't give out, uh, you know, there's HIPAA regulations that prohibit us from giving out any particularized information.
Right.
You know, general numbers, the stuff that's already reported, um, can be passed along, I mean, we, we don't have a borough Department of Health, we, we obviously utilize the county for those services, so anything we have, we get from them.
May I add, uh, Ms. Williams, uh, Nick Legati here, um, in the beginning, when it first started, I, I took it upon myself to just put something together during each council meeting, um, I can pick that up again, um, and anything that I get, a, a governor's order or something along those lines, I, I can start adding that to my, my report, um, at the, you know, at the end of my report, so that I, I stopped doing it, but I, I can continue to do that, pick it up now if, if cases are increasing, I, I understand your concerns, I know what you're talking about, a- and I can start doing that again, if that's okay.
Awesome, that would be really, really helpful and I think really, um, important in case somebody doesn't, you know, know where to go, I think it's a great place to know that they can come to the borough to get that information.
No problem.
Thanks Nick.
Probably good information for people too, the, uh, the elders in our town, they might not have access to the borough website the same way that other people might, so maybe, I know my grandmother watches the borough council meetings when they're put on to Channel 15, so it might be a good place for her to be able to see.
Especially now with things going in, um, a bad direction, we can certainly, uh, look to do that, so thanks, thanks for bringing that up, Courtney.
Thank you so much.
Just as a reminder, for anyone on the phone, raise your hand, it's star nine.
Okay. Uh, seeing none, I think we'll close audience comments and move on to council comments. Does any member of the council have any comments this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Miss, Ron, Councilman Dixon?
I would like to remind everyone that is listening that this Wednesday is Veterans Day, and currently, no services are planned due to COVID epidemic that we're involved with, and I know East Brunswick has canceled theirs, uh, is doing a virtual, and, uh, I think the county is the only one that I'm aware of that is doing any services, and they're at Roosevelt Park at 3:30 at the Monument Square, and that's the only services I'm aware of that are being conducted throughout the county. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and, and happy Veterans Day to all of our, our vets, we appreciate your service.
Madam Mayor, I have, uh, one question for tonight, um, sorry to put, uh, our new clerk on the spot, but, uh, I have been getting a couple of calls on, uh, election results for the Borough of Milltown, is there any update on when they would be finalized or anything along those lines that we can share with the residents tonight?
I asked the deputy clerk that this morning, and she made a call over, um, to, uh, um, to Mr. Lynch, and they are still in a count, counting phase, so they don't expect that we will proba-, that they will get through that for a few more days, um, uh, I'm looking for the certifications to come to me, so as soon as I get them, if they haven't hit the byways and byways first, I'll certainly feel, and I'll pass them along to you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I just, I just wanted to echo Jeanette on, uh, welcoming Mimi to the clerk's position here in the, in our meetings, I was gonna say the council members, at a moment, it's the end of the night, it's late, but, you know, just wanted to say welcome, Mimi.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you for your help today.
We haven't had one that lasted this long in a while, so, you're good. Anyone else have anything? I was gonna say, um, you know, I'm glad that we had a safe, uh, Halloween, I heard a lot of good feedback about people really going above and beyond to, uh, make it nice for the kids, as well as the, the trunk or treat was, uh, was done really nicely, and it was nice to see so many people out on a, on a beautiful day, and I hope that everyone's being safe, um, now too, I know this, the, uh, the count has gone up, and we will certainly, uh, keep you informed. If I can end on a, a personal note, I'll, I'll wax nostalgic a little bit, today would have been my 30th wedding anniversary. Unfortunately, I only got to spend 15 of those years celebrating, and it's gonna be 15 years that I lost my husband to cancer, and I think that makes you realize how important health is and how important family is, so, uh, and this time when we're all so challenged, I hope that you, you know, really appreciate all of the, uh, blessings that you have, that you, uh, you know, really appreciate your family and, and appreciate your health, so, especially now, wear a mask, keep yourself and other people safe, and, and also realize that, you know, we're so fortunate to live in a town where people really keep an eye out for one another and really watch out for each other. I'll, I'll never forget how many people reached out to us, my kids were, were young then, and, you know, I, I feel very lucky to be in a small town where I know I can count on people, and I hope that, you know, even when things get tense, that we all know that we can count on one another and we can all come together and, and pull through the pandemic or, or anything else that happens, so, uh, you know, I, I appreciate you, uh, letting me take just a couple minutes to, to say that and know that I'm thankful for all of you and, and everyone that's, uh, engaged in our town and, uh, you know, consider yourself lucky, and, you know, we'll see you before Thanksgiving, but I'll say that I, I'm thankful to be here and to be able to, uh, engage with all of you, so thank you.
Well said, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Well said.
And do, stay, stay safe, 'cause there's, there's nothing, uh, you know, you, you don't realize somebody can be healthy one minute and, you know, something bad happens the next, so, uh, nothing's, nothing's more important, but thank you all. And with that, no, if there's no other council comments, I will take a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Councilman Legati, second by Councilman Zambrano, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I will adjourn, but I did have to say, we talked about this, we were gonna do a meeting on, um, November 23rd, 'cause we do have some business, it's not on the, um, calendar, but there's no league this year, um, it's a Monday night, we'll, we'll all be around, is that okay with everybody?
Sounds good.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, sorry about that, Jeanette, I almost forgot.
Thank you.
It'll, the clerk will post it, and it'll be the, uh, regular, um, council meeting two weeks from tonight on, uh, the 23rd, so we'll be here, same bat time, same bat channel, so, look forward to it. All right, bye everyone, take care.
Bye.